This conference will now be recorded. Okay, we are beginning our work session for Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. And we'd like to open up with an acknowledgement of the fact that we are on Kalapuaia traditional homelands with two bands, the Mary's River and the Muddy Creek bands of the Kalapuaia, the Ampitafu and Chemafu, who were displaced under the treaty of Willamette Valley in 1855 to the coast range, but are still present with us through the reserves and the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ronde and the Solet Indians. So, thank you. I'm Zan Ojero, Chair, and we will go around and make introductions.
This is Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Cheryl Kirby, County Administrator.
Vance Cronin, County Council.
Alyssa Rash, Public Information Officer.
Teresa Farley, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Greg Riddler, Penn County Sheriff's Office.
Mahon, Key Bay Pronouns Equity Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator.
Leanne Neville, excuse me, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Debbie Parsons, Finance.
Brian Lee, Emergency Manager.
April Holland, Public Counsel.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department Director.
Dick Kerr, Criminal Justice Systems and Imprisonment Program Manager.
Okay, I see that we have Sarah Hartstein is with us as well. And we have one or two guests also. Hi, Sarah. We have Chris Ferny with us this morning. And I believe that's it for now. So, we will move on into announcements. Are there any announcements for the group? I would like to acknowledge that we have heard that our community-based organization partners at Corvallis Housing First and Unity Shelter have learned that their turnkey motel acquisition proposal was approved, and there will be a formal press release about that. And I'm very excited to hear that because it'll give us capacity to permanently shelter a component of folks that are living unhoused at this point in time and to immediately serve as emergency shelter for the foreseeable future. And it's likely the doors will open in March when this is dependent upon getting contractors to do some repairs and some work that needs to be done during that transition process. So, very exciting. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none. We do have a couple of changes to the agenda this morning. Steve Clark from Oregon State University will be joining us at about 9:30. He may jump on sooner in order to listen to some of the EOC update. Kate Porsche will not be with us for Item 4.1 as she has nothing new to report at this time. And we will be adding under other a discussion of Benton County AOC, Association of Oregon Counties, and Council of Government roles. And we will not be having an executive session. So, that's the Order of Business. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda? The move. Second, okay. All in favor signify with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on into the work session. Our first item of business, 4.1, is an update from our emergency operation and department operations centers, beginning with Brian Lee.
Yes, morning Commissioners. So, a couple of quick updates here. The first one I'll start with are the weather impacts from the ice and weather event over the weekend. For folks who don't know, there was obviously a big ice storm and ice rain kind of conditions on Friday and Saturday. That left Biston County at the time with around 1,300 without power. Slowly over the weekend, most folks were restored. However, we still have around 700 folks in our rural communities without power. So, we're working to address any needs that might come up from that community. First can account of just talking to folks who are still without power are that there's not a huge need for additional support. However, we're going to keep diving into that here as the week goes on just to make sure that they're all taking care of. The Governor did declare a state of emergency which included Benton County on Saturday morning. And again, the mostly impacts were accounted for and assessed on Saturday and are in process of being repaired. Talking with CPI, which is Consumer Powers, they noted that a lot of their lines would not be repaired until at the earliest the end of the week just due to the extensive damage. So, a lot of poles broken, a lot of lines down. Here in the EOC, this week, we are focusing on our Thursday clinic. I'll let April give more detailed information there, but there may be some vaccine shipment delays due to weather events around the country that may impact the timing of our clinic. However, at this point, we're still moving ahead with the Thursday vaccination clinic at Rezur. We're focusing on our staffing model and trying to project three to four weeks or more out just to get folks plenty of notice and make sure we have enough staff to account for these other disasters that keep coming up. And we're also developing our transition plan to move the EOC out of its current location due to the reconstruction happening. Last Wednesday, we did a clinic, and I'll just touch on the two highlights. 536 doses were administered. That was 1A seniors as well as educators. And then, we had 115 staff and volunteers, and that includes from Samaritan, their staff, and the city and county staff. They were all out there. And that's all ahead. See the reports.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, moving next to Suzanne Hoffman. April Holland.
Have any new updates to provide? I actually stepped away from the EOC the last week in order to complete some budget document deadlines. I am going to defer to April.
Hi, everyone. I hope you can hear me okay. I'm having some brag. Can you let me know if you can hear me?
You are clear and sounds great.
Great, okay. I think I'm a little behind, and hopefully I'll catch up with myself here. So, hello Commissioners and colleagues. I'm happy to provide a summary of recent vaccine planning and administration efforts here in the EOC in Benton County. Roughly half a million people have received at least one dose of vaccine in Oregon. That's something to celebrate. That's about 12% of the total population of Oregon. And here in Benton County, about 14 people have been reached, and we're using vaccine as quickly as we receive it. Since my update two weeks ago here, we have, in partnership with Samaritan Health Services and OSU, conducted two mass vaccination clinics totaling 2,302 doses and distributed 400 more doses to involve vaccine providers. And this week, as Brian mentioned, we have a 700-dose clinic slated for Thursday. More on that in a moment. More vaccine is trickling in too, and we'll take and use all we can get through a new federal retail pharmacy program, which will bring 100 doses to each of our area's Safeway pharmacies. A state retail program is reported to be in the works as well, so we'll keep you updated on that. And that's a retail pharmacy program. Planning of rural and smaller vaccine clinics do continue, and this week we'll be considering weekend or after-hours clinics. These are relevant now to consider the schedules of childcare workers and others, and they'll become even more important as we look ahead to essential workers. We continue to anticipate and meet the needs of seniors in our community. This week, people age 75 and older are eligible for vaccines. One major barrier to this age group is technology. Our call center and EOC liaison team are deeply engaged, and Samaritan has opened a call center as well. We also understand that many seniors may prefer to hear from a trusted provider directly. So, we're in the process of asking primary care partners if they would like to participate in scheduling their own patients into the mass vaccine clinics. As to additional considerations of residents over 65, the Rezur site is equipped to meet the needs, the mobility and access needs. For example, there's golf cart service from the parking lot, concierge service available to folks, and VIP lane for direct service for those who need it. And the overall rate of vaccination has been slowed to a more relaxed pace to accommodate older persons. Finally, I have good news and uncertain news from OHA. As Brian sort of hinted at, the uncertain news is that vaccine shipments from across the country will face possible delays due to the horrible weather that's facing most of the nation. We have not yet shifted our Thursday clinic, but we might need to do so. We're monitoring the situation closely, and we'll be discussing a threshold for rescheduled clinic this morning. Finally, we received some good news from OHA. We should have consistent weekly allocations for the next month or so, which will allow for advanced planning, and this is music to our ears compared to the weekly cycle in which we've been operating. That's all for vaccine planning. I want to share one thing on COVID vaccine messaging. Amidst swirling uncertainty around breakthrough cases, community immunity, and variants, there are two things to positively celebrate about the available vaccines. They prevent death and severe illness. I don't think enough is really, emphasis is really put on this. After losing almost half a million Americans to COVID, this is amazing and something to celebrate. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you, April. Yes, Nancy.
So, you mentioned that the vaccine clinic might be pushed back due to shipments. Is that the one with Rezur, or no, isn't Lynn County Fairgrounds still doing it? Do you think that one is affected as well?
I think it's possible. We've received a general message from OHA saying that all vaccine shipments may face delays. We've got our vaccine coordinator checking the alert distribution system just constantly. We'll get a notice when it's about 24 hours out. So, that would potentially affect Lynn County too, but not, it's not guaranteed.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Pat.
Yeah, April, just to comment, the first event at Rezur, I've forgotten the exact number, but it was, I think, a couple thousand in two days or something like that. Whoever was responsible, kudos. I liken that to inviting a couple thousand of your closest friends over for a party. And from all I heard, it went really smoothly the first time out. So, congratulations on that. That was an impressive bit of planning. And just to have that large an event to kick things off and be that successful is really good news. And I think it's, especially wintertime here, any kind of good news and just the vaccine supply, maybe once we get past this week, maybe more predictable and just get into routine where you folks can do the planning more than a couple days out. So, looking forward to that.
Thank you, totally.
Well, thank you. I think that all of the extra efforts that we're taking to reach populations that don't typically receive news about vaccine availability, to reach people that are technologically not as adept and that don't have transportation are fantastic. And I appreciate that focus on vulnerable populations and making sure that we don't miss them. With respect to the pharmacy rollout, are we coordinating directly with the local Safeway stores here? And how are they going to manage having such small allocations of doses? It kind of boggles my mind.
It is. We're all in this scarcity environment, and it is going to be a big challenge for them. We noticed that they had a portal online for scheduling, and I think that's probably where they're directing many of their patients. Because this is a federal retail pharmacy program, we didn't have as in-depth involvement as we have with some of our other pharmacy programs. We have communicated with them. I think that's a little bit, some of the pieces are a little out of control, are controlled, because we understand that they're receiving directly from the federal government and have maybe different procedures than what we do.
Okay, but in theory, they're also supposed to be paying, using the same prioritization from OHA in state?
Oh, certainly, yes, yes, Commissioner. They're following the OHA prioritization guidelines.
Okay, I don't have any other questions for April, any others? Thank you very much, April. And yes, the audio caught up with you. Lilia. Do you have an update from the Joint Information Session, that means Center?
Good morning Commissioners. Yeah, so, I am, let's see, I'm going to report mainly about a couple of logistical things, I think. So, as you all know, the board approved a handful of positions to support the emergency response. Several of those positions are within the Joint Information Center. So, last week, I was working to put together some key attributes of individuals, or I'm sorry, for position descriptions to be used for recruiting individuals into those roles. So, we were able to successfully post our call center positions as well as our call center lead by the end of last week, last week. So, that was a huge, huge success, not only for the JIC, but for the overall response as that is one of our main connections into the community. Speaking of the phone bank, this morning, we're pretty busy with the phone bank. Yesterday, another eligibility group opened up, and as of being a holiday, we did not staff the response to the phone bank, so we're following up with callers this morning there. In addition to those phone bank positions, we also were working on those key attributes for the additional communication staff to support the response long-term. Last week, the JIC provided a fair amount of support to our liaison team. As you all know, the liaison team has had their fair share of email troubles, and they have at this point now fully transitioned to using the Constant Contact platform, which has really resolved many of those technical issues. So, our PIOs in the Joint Information Center were helping the liaisons really just kind of set up those final pieces in their Constant Contact account to make sure that we're sending out the most accessible emails to our audiences, considering now that we have even more and more older folks who are trying to reach through email. In addition to that, we were working with our liaisons to implement a manual confirmation process. One of the limitations of the survey tool that we're using is that it doesn't send an email confirmation. We've tried to implement multiple tactics to overcome this limitation of the software, but it just isn't, it's not really filling the need of an email confirmation. So, starting last week, we started implementing daily email confirmations to anyone who is completing the survey, and we're hoping that that will in fact help reduce the number of calls into our call center, because many times the phone call into the call center is, well, I completed my survey, and I completed it two weeks ago, and since I don't have that confirmation email to check, I'm just not confident that I'm in there. So, hopefully implementing that is going to be an improved process, not only for our end users, but for our phone bank. I think, as most of you, if not all of you know, last week on Friday, we opened up our vaccine assessment survey to the latest eligibility group. We're sort of doing this on a rolling basis, so as new eligibility groups open on a Monday, we're actually launching those changes to all of our materials preceding Friday to ensure that the eager individuals who are coming over the weekend preceding their actual eligibility date can in fact gain the information that they're hoping to access as opposed to waiting until the actual date of their eligibility. So, that's happening on a weekly basis, and that is a pretty big lift within the Joint Information Center to make those changes to the survey, to the website in English and in Spanish. But we have an amazing group of people, and so I'm really just impressed at their ability to continue to turn this information around in a thriving manner. Besides that, I think I'll just mention that we continue to have great earned media at the Rezur Vaccination Clinic. Our lead PIO in the field is Alyssa Rash, and so she's been working very closely with the Good Samaritan PIO and our partners at OSU and others, just to get the word out. And we've gotten some great coverage in not only local newspapers, but TV stations not only in Eugene and in the Portland area. So, that's all I have for you all this week. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Lilia. The one question I received about our call center positions was whether or not they can be performed remotely. And I don't know, yes, they can?
Yes, they are completely remote role.
Okay, and that's true for the lead as well?
And that is my understanding.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Yes, Pat.
Lilia, you mentioned the website and getting emails of eligible people signing up. I know the state has a signup covidvaccineoregon.gov. Is what you're talking about separate from that? What's the, I guess, what's the tie-in between the state website and the county signup?
That is a great question, Commissioner Malone, and it's one that I'm actually hoping to get more information on this week. Last week, or gosh, it might have been 10 days ago, actually, I became aware, yeah, probably closer to 10 to 14 days ago, I became aware of an upcoming state tool to determine eligibility. There were a handful of webinars for counties to participate in in advance of the launch of the tool. There was also a survey for counties to complete to inform, you know, how this tool would be created. But bottom line, the state is hoping to create a tool for all counties that basically would, I don't want to say replicate or takes a place, but it potentially could replicate or takes the place of our current vaccine assessment survey. At this point, we don't have enough information yet to make that assessment if, one, it's actually replicating, or, two, it could actually replace our Benton County tool. We do have a reach-out to the state to get a few more answers to our questions. One of the pieces of information that we're looking for is how quickly and easily could we get data from the state system? At this point, we have a daily process internally where, once we get this pull, it cascades in a waterfall of, say, eight things happen once we get this data pull. So, we need this data by a certain time. So, that's one of the questions that we have into the state among probably about a half dozen others. As we learn more about the tool, then we will make those two determinations about the replicability and the applicability.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Lilia. That's very helpful to understand.
Certainly.
Any other questions for Lilia Neville? Okay, then we will move on for a report from Debbie Parsons, and then we will shift over to Steve Clark from OSU.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. So, I think probably our biggest challenge financially is trying to keep up with legislation and executive orders and what they mean. We continue to have conversations with our FEMA reps and our OEM reps to make sure that we're on the same page that they are. The difficulty is that they don't know what page of the book they're on from the federal guidance themselves. So, we're all actually kind of in this together and just navigating the waters as we go. One of the big highlights, which I'm sure you all have heard, is that costs are now going to be funded at 100% as opposed to the 75% and then 25% cost share, so we don't have to worry about a cost share component right now. And that is truly, at this point, all vaccine-related costs, but also there is a component that says anything back to January of 2020 could be included as well, but there hasn't been complete definition of that as it is. That being said, any of our costs up through December 31st, we know already were paid for through the CARES Act, so that's not as important to us as it is from January 1st forward. Our costs, and I say that with a very general tone, since deployment, has been $386,000. But of that, the personnel has been $338,000 of that, of which reimbursable is only $1,300 because that is the overtime. So, the overtime is the only thing. So the overtime is the only thing reimbursable for FEMA, as opposed to when we were with the CARES Act, everything was reimbursable. The one difference is the new positions that will be hired that you all approved will actually be paid at 100% reimbursable, because they were not budgeted, they were not part of anything prior to this vaccination response, so all wages, overtime, and benefits will be paid for at 100%. The rest of the costs have been everything to set up and stand up the mass vac event, to stand up the rural vaccination events that we haven't actually been able to have, but are ready to launch. We also are looking at, there was a CIP project that was presented for reader boards, the electronic reader boards, and we're actually going to shift that into a request and be paid for through the FEMA fund. So right now, we are going through the process of getting quotes for six of those reader boards, which will total, we're thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000. Other than that, there haven't been any significant costs other than printing.
Can I ask a little bit more about the reader boards? Are these small portable reader boards that could be used by roads crew as well?
These are the large, like ODOT reader boards. So if you've been over to the vaccination site, they're the size that you're seeing. And Lilia is, I'm sure, will tell you all about them, because she is very excited about these.
They have multiple functions, yes. Thank you.
So I just felt that I would jump in. So this was a CIP request that I actually put in in collaboration with Emergency Services. It was something that I had just run by our Public Works Department in terms of ensuring that, no, we don't have any reader boards. Throughout the county's response to the pandemic, we've actually had to borrow the city of Corvallis' reader boards whenever we've wanted to use reader boards. And so our Public Works Department responded that, no, we didn't have any. Yes, they would be used if we were to have some, and I've heard, you know, of course, indirectly, that parks would be interested as well as others. So when the news about the change in the funding requirements came, I received word from Financial Services that they preferred for me to direct the CIP request outside of the CIP process and through the emergency response process. Part of that is the fact that we are having these weekly vaccine clinics, and external signage has been one of the areas where we can improve. And so having access to the reader boards on a weekly basis without having to borrow them would be helpful. The original CIP request was for six units. What we're looking at purchasing are two of the bigger units that can be used for larger signage signs and information, and then four of the smaller units. It appears that they would be easier to move around and store. That is a little bit less than my wheelhouse in terms of the technical specifications, and I'd have to pass it off to someone else, but I just wanted to pop in briefly and tell you all where the reader boards came from, because they are a hot topic these days.
Thank you. It sounds like Gary is ready to jump in on that one.
Just a little bit. Lilia did a great job. So yes, there's two, I'll say, the bigger, more of a highway-type units. They're programmable, solar backup, batteries, that, all that business. And then four of them are smaller. They still have the same kind of capabilities, they're solar, but for our more rural roads, the smaller ones are easier to deploy, because often we need shoulders, and sometimes we don't have those. So it was a strategic purchase, so to speak, and then they'll be stored out here, because we have a secure place to put them, and then they'll just be used as they're needed to. So yeah, they're good units, and we're excited about having them.
Sounds great, Pat.
Yeah, I suppose, Gary, well, soon we actually receive the units.
How soon will we receive the units? I think I will have to defer to Lilia on that, but I believe that once the order is placed and they can deliver them, some of them are actually in stock in Portland. Now, getting them out of Portland might be a trick at the moment, but I think a week to 10 days is what I remember seeing in the order, but Lilia will have to kick me in correctly.
Thank you, Gary. Yeah, I don't believe that the order has been just finalized quite yet, Commissioner. On Friday, I might be a little bit behind in my email, to be honest with you, but on Friday, I believe folks were just kind of kicking around the final details in between Public Works, Emergency Services, et cetera. And I think that now that those final details have been identified, I think that we're ready to move forward with the purchase. But again, that is a little bit maybe more in Debbie and Brian's realm, in terms of the status of where that particular piece is at.
Thank you.
Thank you. That sounds like a useful tool. Debbie, do you have further information for us?
No, I think that's all I had. I can confirm that the order has not yet been made, so it's expected to happen this week now that, just like Lilia and Gary said, that the details have been ironed out. So those should be ordered this week, and we should have them in the next week or so.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any further questions for Debbie? Okay, then we will move on and invite Steve Clark from Oregon State University to give us an update about COVID matters from the OSU perspective and engagement with the community.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the County Commission. Dan and I spoke a few days ago, and we thought it might be valuable to provide just a general update, and then in future weeks and months, if you would like, continuing updates to the Commission. Before I start, just with very brief comments, I'd like to thank the county for its continuing efforts around public health in general and in the pandemic in specific. The work of Suzanne, April, Lilia, and others is remarkable and continues to serve Benton County residents, our businesses, and certainly our Everest populations extremely well. So thank you for those efforts. Generally, let me just give you a little sense, as I believe I've shared with you in the past, that testing has been a significant part of Oregon State University's efforts to not only inform, but to manage the impact of COVID-19 within the university and frankly within many communities, including the Corvallis community through our trace work. We continue to do wastewater surveillance throughout the Corvallis community, as well as on campus and in targeted areas such as population groups around sororities and paternities and some of the large privately owned and managed apartment complexes in the Corvallis area. We think this testing is afforded us not only information, but the ability to respond with further testing, expanded isolation and quarantine measures, contact tracing work that we do among the OSU student population on behalf of the county, and a culture of care as well as communications to help seek to reduce the risk and spread of the virus. We have increased our testing, and I know that that comes at a time when increased testing produces, in some cases, increased reports of positive cases. And of late, in the last week or two, that's provided for some, if you will, consternation among community members in Lane County and in Benton County, while recognizing that risk levels have remained the same in those areas, but have declined in other counties. We're aware of this concern, and we're focused on trying to be the best partner as possible while not abandoning our commitment to testing. But I do understand the importance of community concern, business concern, and like the official concern about what does this all mean. So let me give you a sense of where we are now and what we're going to do next, and happy to take questions about how do we manage, if you well, or inform behaviors among students, employees, to minimize growth in positive cases. Beginning in winter term, the term we're in right now, we began requiring all students living in our residence halls to be tested each week. That's a requirement. We can do that because they sign contracts with us. And for example, two weeks ago, that increased testing at OSU by close to 1,400 additional people. We did this because we saw wastewater results that were concerning, not in all student residence halls, but in some, but enough to prompt us to respond on a regular, weekly required basis, whereas in fall term, when we saw any increases, we did it on a situational basis in a specific residence hall or two. We also saw through our community wastewater analysis some concerning trends among neighborhoods where there are a number of sororities and paternities. So we have provided weekly voluntary testing for all Greek life members. Some of these are students who live within sororities and paternities, some live in private housing, some actually are Greek members, all of whom are now Greek members, so there's sort of a confluence occurring there. But we thought it was important to again respond with increased testing. Unlike our residence halls, paternities and sororities are not owned by the university, they're not managed by the university. They operate in a shared partnership, if you will, of behavior and of activity, but unlike the residence halls, we cannot require students living in Greek life or members of Greek life and living somewhere else to be tested. We've also continued our trace OSU onsite testing among students, faculty, and staff. So what are we seeing? We saw what we anticipated, and actually, beginning in the week of February 10th, we saw a spike in cases. Actually, we went from a range of 57, 66, 59 positive cases to 119, and this is data collected by the university through trace, for information of symptomatic students coming to our Student Health Center and saying, I'm feeling sick, please test me, and be like me having a heart attack going to the hospital and saying, test me. And these are students who are mindful of their health, and thankfully, they're coming to seek help, and seek help. We've also got numbers from Suzanne Hoffman's team, and those include tests being provided by other stakeholders in the Benton County community or another county throughout the state. That produced a record high of 119 positive cases reported on February 10th. Were we concerned? Yes, we are. And what are we doing about that? Well, we're continuing the testing levels at present. We're monitoring the results within trace OSU, residence hall testing, our sororities and paternities, information provided by the county. We have continued to emphasize accountability and education among all student members of OSU and continue to do that. End of last week, there were meetings with sorority and fraternity life leaders, and we know that if any of you have students or young adults, maybe no longer students, that some days, like on Monday and Tuesday, they're just doing everything just right, and young adults, sometimes on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, do something completely inane. And I know I have two young men in my life, my sons, and some of them made dumb decisions on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and I suspect some of your family members have as well. But that doesn't keep us from working with them, getting student leaders to communicate with them, and holding our measures of accountability firm. Going forward, we plan to increase our testing, even while vaccination opportunities for population groups involving the university will continue to expand, because we think it's important to be tested and to be informed. We think about the specific issues associated in Lane County and in Benton County regarding risk levels. I would hope that our community, the Commission, public health experts, both public and private, understand that information is important, and that we don't seek to create cast of young adults versus everyone else. And while we work with OHA and the Governor's Office, I would hope that we, as partners, think about how can we encourage OHA to take note of the testing that's emphasized within Benton and Lane Counties, really unlike any other counties in this state, and say that increased testing provides not necessarily for two caste systems, but for an evaluation that might allow Benton County, and in our case, or Lane County at some point in the future, to go to a reduced risk level and not be punished, if you will, by increased testing levels. I hope this has been helpful. We will continue to provide you updates, and I'm happy to briefly answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Steve. That's very helpful, and I do like the way you are phrasing that suggestion to engage with Oregon Health Authority and the Governor's Office with respect to testing. And if we have data about the testing rates within Benton County and within Lane County that would allow us to state that argument very clearly, that would be helpful, because I do believe that we are in relatively good shape here at Benton County, but that we just know an awful lot more about the true prevalence of the disease in the community than most communities are able to assess. So that's a very good suggestion, and additional data would help us bolster that case if you and April Holland and others could help with that. Questions from my fellow commissioners? Pat?
Yeah, Steve, as far as the university's impact and comparing Lane County and Benton County, Lane County, I think, has about four times the population, county population than Benton County does with similar-sized institutions. So OSU has a really large effect on Benton County and a little more diluted because of the larger population base in Lane County. Appreciate your efforts, but Benton County getting stuck in the extreme category is hard on our businesses and other organizations, so I hope we can somehow make some progress.
That's what we're all focused on, and to the extent that OHA will take into consideration testing rates along with population and positive case numbers, I think would be very valuable. In the case of, this is my anecdotal knowledge, I think the positive case rates among students at OSU compared with U of O, not singling out either as being positive, one being negative, the numbers are quite different. We have, I understand, far fewer. I'm not saying that to praise the university or its students, but just to acknowledge that both are different, and Commissioner, to your point, if we address population positive cases and testing as part of the OHA evaluation, I think it'd be very valuable.
Appreciate your efforts, and it's been a while since we've seen your smiling face, so I appreciate, believe, you did an update, because you're an important part of our community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Dan and I have talked, and I've talked with Mayor Traver about the idea of possibly the institutions of the county, the city, and the university, and possibly Samaritan Chamber Commerce hosting a community town hall updating on COVID-19, and that information that is so important that you're engaged in could be shared with cities, county, or, excuse me, Samaritan and the university. Maybe we could think about doing that in the second week of March and providing valuable information, up-to-date information for our community and members and business partners.
I think that that would be a good idea. I think that people are going to be concerned, again, about spring break. Anytime we have these opportunities for people to leave the community and return or a holiday, it's always an anxiety-provoking moment, so that might be good timing in anticipation of spring break. So, thank you. We also spoke about the fact that we would like to engage more frequently with Oregon State University on both COVID-related topics and other topics, and entertain the both COVID-related topics and other topics, and entertain the notion of Steve coming to a board meeting on a regular basis to speak with us. So, we should speak about frequency and what seems optimal that way. We know that there are many other issues that we have in common. So, thank you.
And I've promised to smile.
It's always a good thing.
I thank you all. And again, it's not without great effort and a lot of thoughtfulness that you do your work, and we appreciate it at the university, and I do personally. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the update.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay. So, moving on, our next item of business, 4.2, is floodplain project updates. We're changing directions completely. And we will move over to Toby Lewis, Greg Verrett, and Gordon Kurtz from Community Development. And this has been a really busy topic lately, from what I can tell from the meeting notices. There's an awful lot going on in this world. So, appreciate your coming to speak to us today.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. I will just kick things off. Toby and Gordon have the bulk of the technical knowledge, but I am very glad to be working with both of them on these topics. As you mentioned, Commissioner Ogera, there is a lot going on. So, we have three mapping projects, or remapping projects, that are currently underway affecting parts of Benton County. And then we want to update you on those, and then also update you on the status of federal ESA, Endangered Species Act compliance, and some of the challenges that that poses for local nonprofits engaged in habitat restoration. So, I believe, Toby, are you going to start us off discussing the remapping project? All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, just to give a little bit of background, Benton County's first set of floodplain state maps was, became effective in 1986. We are currently using our second set of floodplain state maps that were issued by FEMA. Those became effective in 2011, and the North Albany area was revised, I think, in 2016. So, the first item on the project list there is the Extended Upper Willamette Flood Hazard Map Remapping Project. This is a project that has been in the works for, I think I've been hearing about it for about five years now, that it was going to be coming our way, and it's finally getting underway. Covers most of Benton County. The initial scope of the project was just for the Upper Willamette watershed area. But because FEMA is aware that Benton County always does need revised flood hazard maps, and we have a large number of areas that have what are called approximate flood zones, where the maps show that the area might be underwater, but they don't have information about how high that water elevation would be, they've been willing to extend the scope of the project in Benton County as much as they can. The only areas that I'm aware that it does not include right now would be for the Lucky Mute River watershed and the Alsey watershed. But the rest of the county is hopefully going to be included in some form or fashion. The project is run by FEMA. They have a risk mapping and assessment planning program. They usually call that RiskMap. They're doing their best to be really collaborative about it. So, we had a kickoff meeting back in June, and then we had to explain what the project was at a boardwork session. And then, we recently, just last January, had a discovery meeting where they put together a story map that shows the high-priority water sections and the areas where the flood hazard is currently mapped, the areas where their preliminary estimates think it should more accurately be mapped. We had a really good turnout. They were very pleased with the participation. We had people from the county, from Corvallis, Palomas, Adira Village, and Monroe, all attending. And then we also had several of the watershed council representatives to that as well. It was the first time that they had done a virtual discovery meeting, so we've got to be getting proof for that. But they felt like it went really well, and they're excited to get going on it. We probably won't hear any more about this project for three, six months or so, because the people at FEMA are working on scoping it and figuring out how much they can get funded, how detailed of a study they can get funded for the project. Any questions on that one before I go on to the next one? Oh, and the expected timeframe for that is probably about seven years or so before it's complete.
It's a very long-term process, and it will straddle multiple fiscal years at the federal level. And so, yes, it's hard to know exactly where it will go, but it is really important from our perspective in terms of being able to have good data to work with for planning and engineering. So, I'm excited about it, even though it's going to be glacial. Let us know what we can do to help. I'm definitely interested in making sure that the project gets good funding legs under it, so it is meaningful.
Okay. Yeah. And right now, I think the most important part is if there's a request for interest or something like that, they just really want to know that as a county, we are interested in this process.
That's good to know, and I'm happy to help provide that, given climate-related issues as well. We need to make sure that we know where we're headed and have the best available information to work on planning moving forward.
Okay. So, next project, this is a new one, and it came about because of the first project I just mentioned. So, this one is, the responsible agent before is the Army Corps of Engineers. They've actually been, we've been talking to the Army Corps of Engineers for a bit about how to do maybe some more detailed studies of areas where we don't know what the base flood elevations are, and areas where we think the flood hazard mapping is significantly off. They have access to smaller amounts of funding and can do small stream reaches. And usually, they can do them in a fairly detailed way, which gives the flood elevation data that we would want. We were originally looking at a section of Greasy Creek, just outside of Palomas, but it looks like that one is going to be covered under the FEMA project. And because the Lucky Mute watershed is not going to be covered under the FEMA project, the representatives from Army Corps of Engineers started looking into that area, because we do have a large number of letter of mass amendment approvals from FEMA, and those are areas where individual property owners have submitted documentation to FEMA showing that the ground where their house sits, or the ground on a larger area of their property, is actually higher than the flood elevation. And then, if FEMA agrees, they issue that letter of mass amendment, saying, "Yes, we agree. This area has now been removed from the floodplain." And because there are such a significant number of those letter of mass amendment approvals in that area, it looks like the Army Corps is going to be able to get some funding to do a new study for the Lucky Mute watershed area. They are currently working on, they've got preliminary approval for the grant award, but only 33% of that award is still available for survey work. So, they're putting together some cost estimates based on, to give us an idea of what kind of project outcomes they could come up with. A slightly less detailed study if they only use grant funding, a more detailed study, but maybe not a full study if the county was able to pitch in a little bit of money to cover some of that surveying, to augment the surveying costs, and then a full detailed study if there was funding from the county to complete all of the surveying work that would need to be done that isn't covered by the grant funding. The estimated timeframe on that project is about three to five years, and I will be letting you know once we've got the cost estimates and more details from the Army Corps on that one.
Okay. And how extensive a reach of the Lucky Mute watershed is this looking at?
The entire section that is in Benton County.
Oh, that's a, great. Okay. Yeah, that is good. And do you have an order of magnitude sense for what a low and a high level of funding might be?
I don't yet. Paul Squifani at Army Corps is the person that I've been working with, and I haven't gotten that information yet from him.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Project three. So, this is a project that is being run by the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, Dogami. It's been in the works for, I think, about two years now, if I remember correctly. It might be three at this point. It's almost done. They're estimated that it'll be complete in the next six months to a year. So, this is a multi-hazard mapping project. The hazards that they're working on are landslide, channel migration, liquefaction, and flood depth, which is a little bit different than the flood hazard mapping. But it provides really interesting information, because you can, on the maps that they produce, you can see a gradation of colors, from darker colors to deeper, where the water is expected to be deeper, to lighter colors out on the edges. So, you get a real feel for how intense that flooding might be in those areas. The landslide mapping, I've seen a few examples of that, and that's looking really cool. So, they, again, this one is entirely funded by whatever Dogami processes, and they're just working on finalizing that. The new mapping should be excellent information for looking at ways to decrease hazards from landslides, helping inform emergency response decisions, helping inform some potential pre-dewaster mitigation projects, or identify those that are areas that would benefit from that.
I would expect that that data would also be very useful to Oregon Department of Forestry and to others as well, looking at forest harvest patterns. And again, that's a form of mitigation of effects on roads as well. So, that sounds good. So, you say that that project is wrapping up soon, and it sounds like it's going to result in a whole bunch of cool maps?
Yeah. So, they said, the last estimate I heard was, I think it was in January, they were estimating six months to a year before they issue those maps.
Well, it's a bounty of field study that is pretty amazing, coming from three different entities at state and federal level. It's good to hear.
Yeah. Well, and they've really been, going back to the first flood mapping project, FEMA has really been working on making sure that their projects are, they're working together with multiple agencies. That's one of the things that they look for when money is awarded for grants and things like that. Even the Lucky Mute watershed grant project is making sure that there are multiple agencies working together, and that it's beneficial to more than just one jurisdiction or one agency. I think we had about just over 40 people at the discovery meeting last month, and probably half of them were from a variety of state and federal agencies.
It's good. It's good to know that the right hand knows what the left hand's doing.
Yeah.
Pat, you got a question?
Yes. Toby, on the last project, well, is the mapping something to do with LiDAR? You weren't very specific when you said cool maps, but...
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'd love to see some.
Yeah. So, they've got LiDAR-based imagery, and it includes topographic lanes, and it includes some, the typical shading that I've seen, it goes from red to yellow to green based on high-risk areas versus lower-risk areas for landslides. And it's bare earth imagery, so it cuts through all the trees, and you can really get a sense of where the ground has been moving.
And in terms of liquefaction, that's the one that I have a harder time wrapping my mind around, but that is definitely related to seismic risk, correct?
Yeah. Yeah. So, liquefaction is when you have an earthquake, and the frequency of the earthquake causes the ground to vibrate, and basically, if it's the right frequency of the earthquake, it's going to be particles in the number.
I think we're getting some interference. Callers that are calling in on the telephone, please mute their phone. We will be able to hear our speakers better. Thank you.
All right. So, yeah. So, if the ground is vibrating at the right frequency, and it's different for different ground makeup, I'm not real versed on the part, but basically, if it's vibrating at the right frequency, it'll kind of turn to slush or to liquid. And that's not real great if you have a building sitting on top of it.
Thank you. Are there other questions about this suite of projects that's going on? Not at this. Oh, Nancy?
I have a general question that kind of goes back to the first project. It's the one by FEMA. So, it said that the Lucky Mute was not included, Alsey was not included. In the Army Corps of Engineers, the Lucky Mute is included. Do we have anything that includes Alsey, or is it not needed, or is it in the future, hope we're going to get done?
It's definitely needed. It's not included right now. I believe that it is planned for some future date. I have heard that on and off over the last several years, but it's kind of like the Upper Willamette project, where you hear about it for a long time, and it's out there and it's coming, but it just hasn't gotten here yet.
It's just a different region for FEMA, right? So, yeah, it has to do with their own regionalization boundaries, and which one is in the queue for priority at a different time because of the watershed boundaries. So, would that be, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Sorry to interrupt you.
I was just going to say, it sounds like that would be taken on by FEMA then in the future, if and when it happens?
It certainly could be. That would be the agency. If nobody else picks it up first, that would be the agency that would do it. But there is preliminary base level engineering data for that. So, meaning, FEMA has produced a preliminary set of data that indicates where the flood hazard area might be more accurately mapped, like they have for the Upper Willamette watershed area. And there are some significant discrepancies between where they think it should be mapped and where it currently is mapped. But if, so, the preliminary work has been done, it just hasn't been funded to complete all of that. And if, you know, as a county, if we wanted to put some money into that, we could certainly make it happen. But it's a fairly significant project.
I'd like to interject a couple of things here. The Alsey Basin, if you look at the proportional inaccuracies between that of the Willamette Basin or the Lucky Mute Basin, the Willamette and its tributaries, and the inaccuracies that are in the flood mapping for the Alsey Basin, there's a much greater skew in the Willamette Basin. And further complicating things is that updates to the Alsey, the Alsey drains course to the Pacific, and as a system, functions in a completely different fashion than the Willamette does on this side of the coast range. And so, although it leaves Alsey in alert for the time being... And so although it leaves Elsie in the lurch for the time being, it makes sense that FEMA would want to address the entire length of the Elsie from the headwaters all the way out to the estuary at some point in the future as sort of a large-scale project. That's not to say they couldn't do something in the headwaters independently, but, you know, I just thought I'd throw that out there.
I think that what makes sense is for us to talk to our colleagues over in Lincoln County. And if we are interested in having that Elsie project elevated as priority, we should all be talking to our congressional delegations about the fact that we would like to see that project appear sooner rather than later.
And doesn't some of the Elsie originate in Lane County? Or am I not remembering that correctly?
A little bit of it does, yes. Sort of north, I guess it would be northwesterly, Lane County contributes to that basin, yes.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
We're remodeling the stool over the next couple of years, spending some eight million dollars. It might, I don't know if that could trigger more interest or a better look at the Elsie floodplain.
That's a good point to take into account. Thank you, Chris.
So I will make sure to let the folks at FEMA know that I've been working with on the first project, that that remodel has come.
Thank you, Toby. So are there other questions about these studies, these long-term and hopefully Dogami nearer-term results, before we turn to the effects of FEMA floodplain regulation? Okay, I think we can proceed with the second part of the presentation.
All right, I will start this off with a little bit of background. A number of years ago now, it was determined that the FEMA Floodplain Management Program, which is essentially a federal program that's implemented by local jurisdictions, so Benton County, for example, regulating development in the floodplain, that it was not in compliance with the Endangered Species Act. And that began a years-long effort that is still underway to develop a mechanism or set of guidelines or regulations that local governments could implement in order to ensure that determinations and permits that are issued regarding development in the floodplain, that those are compliant with the Endangered Species Act, in particular in our area regarding endangered salmonid species. So we're in this long interim period during which we, we as the local government and FEMA as the federal agency, are aware that floodplain development activities need to be reviewed for compliance with the Endangered Species Act. But we lack, at least at the local level, a clear methodology for making those determinations. We have guidance from FEMA about how to, ways to go about that, how to go about that in this interim period. But we don't have specific criteria that we can hold up a development application, hold up these criteria, evaluate the two, and decide. Wouldn't that be nice? We're hoping someday. In this interim period, we are doing our best to try to ensure that projects do comply with the Endangered Species Act. And really, the problem, the challenge comes that we at a local level don't have the expertise to be evaluating these projects and determining, yes, this floodplain fill over here is going to have a negative impact on salmonid species, whereas this habitat project over here is not. And so in this interim period, we have a couple ways to find that the Endangered Species Act has been complied with. One of those is that if there is a state or federal permit involved in the activity, so for example, an in-stream habitat project often, sometimes often, will involve a Department of State lands, Army Corps of Engineers, joint wetland permit. And during that state or federal permit process, permit review process, those agencies are coordinating an Endangered Species Act review. And so if they sign off on the project, then we can use that as evidence that the Endangered Species Act has been complied with, and we can issue our permit. The second option is if there is no other permit involved at a state or federal level, then we at Benton County have been guided by FEMA to require a federal process called a CLOMR, C-L-O-M-R, Conditional Letter of Map Revision Process, in which the local applicant submits details of their project and its impact on the floodplain to FEMA. And FEMA does a review of both of the floodplain impacts and the Endangered Species Act impacts through consultation with NOAA Fisheries. And so those are the two in general, and Toby and Gordon can discuss more details of those processes if you have interest in that. Obviously, this presents a challenge for many applicants. And particularly, we've been hearing concerns and understanding those concerns from watershed councils, the Soil and Water Conservation Districts, and similar entities, nonprofit entities, that are doing in-stream habitat work or floodplain habitat restoration work. It can be a significant challenge to submit the, obtain the necessary information and submit the CLOMR application. And so we met with a group of those organizations, September, February 1st, and I think had a good, robust discussion, gave them the background, if they didn't already have it, which many of them did, and went through in more detail about the CLOMR process. Had a good discussion and back and forth, several questions raised, some things that we are looking into further or have looked into further. I don't think we uncovered a magic bullet, you know, a, oh, we didn't know about that process. We can just use this, and it's suddenly simple, unfortunately. But we will be continuing to work with them to help them through the process best that we can at the local level, provided them contacts at the state and federal level as well, and keep all of us engaged in the FEMA NOAA Fisheries process that is underway to develop local regulations or local guidance that will enable us to make these determinations in a simpler fashion in the future. So I'm going to pause there and ask Toby or Gordon to add any details or correct anything that I may have misspoken about. Toby, I can't hear you.
I think you covered it pretty well. So I guess, the meeting on the first was a nice one to have because I haven't had a chance before to talk with all of those agencies at once. And it was nice to see everybody on the call. We had Mary River Watership Council, Lucky Mute, Longtime, I think, was there as well, Gordon?
Longtime was there as well.
Yeah, and Benton, so, yeah, Midcoast as well. So, and then there's some other agencies as well. So that was, it was a good conversation overall. And I think we provided the same policy that was attached to the agenda checklist for how our process works, and we also provided the slide deck that was attached to the agenda checklist as well. Just kind of some background information on the ongoing process and kind of the things that FEMA and NOAA Fisheries and the state are all working in collaboration together to try and come up with a resolution to this process so we can move beyond the interim process that we're in and actually have specific guidance and direction for what needs to happen in the future.
I think there's an important nuance to draw in that, as Greg mentioned, we don't have staff currently that is qualified to make a, to judge compliance with all of the aspects of ESA. We may have some people on staff who can, who could reasonably assess compliance with portions of the ESA. But I personally, although I'm comfortable with ichthyian species, I'm not necessarily comfortable with avian and mammalian species, and I definitely don't know anything about insects. So I, you know, there's holes in our collective, our collective knowledge. The other point is that even if we did have somebody on staff that was capable of doing a comprehensive ESA analysis, is the county willing to assume the liability involved with certification of that, of that, of that compliance? And I would suggest that, no, we're not, simply because the risk exposure is so high. Now, that's a decision to be made by people well above my pay grade. But I'd like to throw that out there as kind of a comparison contrast of what our options are, so.
It sounds like a very challenging situation to be in, and it's very political. I know when I was back in Washington DC last March for the National Association of Counties meeting, this court decision was very much a topic of conversation. And many commissioners brought it to the attention of Senators White and Merkley and all of our Congress people, because they very much dislike this new level of regulation on behalf of endangered salmon and other endangered species. And so I think it's going to continue to be a battleground issue. And I appreciate your taking the time to update us at this level so that we, as commissioners, can understand the complexities and both the positive aspects of wanting to ensure Endangered Species Act compliance and some of the perversities that occur when you end up with all of these multiple agencies trying to regulate the same thing, and we don't have the local capacity to implement on the ground. So it's a big, complex ball of wax. And what I get frustrated about is that a lot of people just want to dump it all out rather than addressing the complexity that's inherent in the situation. So I very much appreciate it. And I have a lot of empathy for my colleagues in the environmental groups who had projects funded and thought they were going to be able to do them as they'd always done them, and then all of a sudden came up against this new, very expensive analytic need that they didn't have budgeted. And of course, then ended up stuck, not being able to do the work. And for some of those groups, it's also a matter of cash flow and being able to survive. So it's a kind of pretty critical.
There's a very, there's a very distinct irony in that the, in that the effort to have FEMA regulate the ESA or comply with the ESA has resulted in harming smaller agencies' ability to do restoration projects which were benefiting the floodplain. And I, you know, lawsuits are lawsuits. They have consequences, so.
Yep. Toby? So with respect to what you were saying a minute ago about carefully taking a look at all of this and really figuring it out comprehensively, I think that you would be very pleased with how FEMA and NOAA Fisheries and the state are really working on trying to do that. They started, gosh, I don't know, it was probably like five years ago or maybe a little more than that, and thought that they were going to be able to come up with very specific instructions for local jurisdictions as to how to implement the requirements for compliance with Endangered Species Act. And then, I'm not really sure what happened, it kind of fell by the wayside for probably a number of reasons. But they restarted that in the last year or so, and they've been holding listening sessions and really working on getting feedback from as many different jurisdictions and agencies and community groups as they can to try and understand how the, what the agencies that are going to be required to implement this at the local level are going to be dealing with, what we would need in terms of instruction to make sure that we're doing it right and to make sure that it's workable and that it applies across the entirety of Oregon. We have a huge range of climates and water areas and flood hazard areas. And so the goal, and even, you know, the difference between urban environments and rural environments, and you can't just put one set of regulations out there and expect it to work for every single situation. So that's what they're working on, is really getting that feedback and really listening to what jurisdictions are saying and the community groups. And the environmental groups as well, because they want to make sure that when they produce that final guidance, that it's going to work.
I know that this has an effect beyond just the restoration groups. I have a long-term acquaintance here in the community who owns a farm, who's been wanting to put up greenhouses in the Willamette floodplain. And understands that we, as the county, have been requiring engineering of those greenhouses. And they've been scratching their heads, saying, well, no one knows what an engineered greenhouse is. How do you engineer a greenhouse? So I think that this is another example of common sense and regulation coming into conflict. And I suspect that that case is also linked to this new FEMA ESA guidance. I have not had a chance to reach out and talk to you all directly.
If it's greenhouse-related, it's probably the ESA compliance isn't really going to come into play too much on that. We've been instructed during this interim period to continue processing our building permits the same way that we have been in the past. It's the larger projects where there's stream restoration projects, things that are going to alter the waterway, or installing the large, woody debris placement. Those types of things are what are triggering ESA compliance. A building permit for a greenhouse, so typically, if the project, if a greenhouse construction project was outside the floodplain, and it was, say, hoop house construction where it's just the tubing and you put some plastic over the top or some kind of vinyl over the top, that's not usually going to require a building permit. But as soon as it's located in the floodplain, then all of our floodplain standards apply. So if the structure has more than one rigid wall, then the floor is going to have to be elevated 18 inches above the flood elevation. That's going to require an elevation certificate, which means the property is going to have to go out and hire a surveyor to come out three times, two to three times to the property. It also requires application for building permits. If the structure is entirely flexible-sided, so whatever material they're covering it with is basically flexible as a piece of paper, then it doesn't count as a structure for floodplain purposes, but it still has to have a building permit. So when I say it doesn't count as a structure for floodplain purposes, that just means that it doesn't have to be elevated. But we still need to know that if they're hooking up mechanical equipment to it, say, you know, like fans or something for ventilation, that all has to be elevated 12 inches above the flood elevation, which again triggers hiring a surveyor for elevation certificates.
Got it. I know it's just changed a lot. And so it's an expensive proposition when you're talking about multiple greenhouses. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Are there other questions? Hearing none, and since we are a little behind, I guess we will move on from here, but thank you, I really appreciate the update. It's very helpful, and I look forward to continuing to track these projects. I do want to mention that I did, as you know, was able to sit in briefly on a little bit of the Mary's River Watership Council, Long Tom Watership Council discussions about restoration in more urban areas or voluntary work on floodwater retention, and I look forward to hearing what the longer-term outcome of those conversations might be.
Yeah, interesting.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Bye-bye. Okay. At this time, we have concluded our work session, and I propose that we take a 10-minute break before we begin our business meeting. So we are in recess until 10:40.
It's like we're here. We are now back from our recess and about to begin our business meeting. And the first item on the agenda for our business meeting out of 5.1 is our consent calendar that includes three items: appointment of a budget committee member, approving a memorandum of agreement with the Benton County Deputy Sheriff's Association, updating COVID emergency leave provisions, and in the matter of sending a letter of support to, of SB 587 regarding tobacco retail licensure in Oregon to our state legislative delegation. Do I hear either a motion or a request to remove any of these items from the consent calendar for a separate discussion?
I move to approve the three items on the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay, consent calendar is approved, and we will move on to item 6.1, departmental reports and requests with a discussion decision adopting the Special Transportation Advisory Committee recommendations for allocation of 2021-23 biennium for special transportation funds. Gary, Lisa, and Brad.
So Commissioner, oh, there's Lisa. So I will just turn it on. I think this is an item you heard a couple of weeks ago. So this is just the formal adoption of the recommended projects that came out of the STACK committee. So Lisa, you can clean up my mess. So here.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, this is a process that we undertake every two years. We get special transportation fund monies through the state of Oregon by a formula to all the, all the STF agencies, which are generally mass transit districts, counties, and tribes. And so Benton County is the STF agency for our area. That funding is then, it's possible to make available to others who provide services to seniors and people with disabilities within the county. It is also possible for the county to keep the entirety of the funding and fund our own program, which, which we run, of course, countywide through our contractor dial-a-bus and then, and then some regional services as well. Historically, we have always made money, to my knowledge, we've, we've made money available to private providers, nonprofits typically, the COG in, in a couple of, for a couple of projects. And so we did that again this year, notified those agencies that this funding was available. And in the agenda checklist, you can see the applicants and how much we approved in the last biennium, how much was requested this biennium, and what your staff, which met on the 26th of January, recommended for funding this biennium. That, the total that we got this year was $440,334, and a very small amount of it frankly is, has been requested by these outside agencies. And so you have an order that would adopt that recommendation from the STACK, and on the, on attachment A of the order, you can see the summary. The other thing that I will add is that simultaneous to the STF money coming out, the state also passes along federal 5310 funding, which is funding for, again, seniors and people with disabilities. And so on attachment A of the order, you can see our proposals for how Benton area transit would be using that money. And so the next step after this, if you approve it, is that staff prepares an application that recognizes all these recommendations to ODOT, and we, we enter into an agreement for the next biennium with them. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
You know, coming right on the heels of the STIF funding, this looks like a very parallel process, and I can completely understand why we have the desire to merge the STACK and STIF, or STF and STIF. Yeah. So, but this looks like a good list. I'm glad that we are able to help support our local nonprofits like Janus House and Grace Center and the Council of Governments with their special transportation needs as well. So, any other questions, or do I hear a motion?
Uh?
Go ahead. Are you going to make a motion?
Oh, yes, I just wanted to say appreciate all the efforts that goes into that business, and any kind of simplification of the structure would, I think, be a step in the right direction. But I would move that the board of commissioners accept the funding recommended, recommendations of the Special Transportation Advisory Committee for the 2021-2023 biennium, and sign the SED order.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thank you very much for all of the staff work, and look forward to seeing the money flow. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Okay, onward. Sorry, but looking back and forth's agenda here. The next item of business is new business, discussion and consideration of approving the submission of SCL 805 requesting for ballot, request for ballot title for the local option levy. And I see we have both Nick and Vance here with us for this item.
Thank you, Commissioners, Council. Yeah, this is an administrative matter associated with the upcoming anticipated Public Health and Safety Local Option Levy. For the checklist, this is form SCL 805, which is a request for ballot title. The, the language in SCL 805 is relevant not only to the title, but also to subsequent documents and safe harbor materials. So please consider the language carefully. It is our request today that you consider it, and are recommending approval of the language in its entirety. I want to note one edit to the checklist. I believe when I submitted, submitted it, there is a question about options. I think I may have indicated NA, or that's not exactly accurate, so I just want to be clear that you can approve the SCL 805 as presented today. You may modify it. You may delay approval and approve at a later date prior to the filing deadline, or you can take no action, in which case we would not advance the local option levy for renewal. We just wanted to be clear that those are all options for your consideration.
Before we move forward to consideration, I would also like to have a better understanding of the timeline, because we have one more form to file before measure goes to ballot, and want to know, to confirm when that decision will be made as well, because obviously there are a lot of other contingencies with respect to timing on the side of the community advocates that are supporting this levy.
Right. So our plan is to return on March 2nd for approval of the statement, and at least it was my understanding that relative to community efforts, having approval of the ballot title prior to March 2nd, and at your earliest convenience, was advantageous to community efforts. I would say if there was desire for us to return before March 2nd with the statement, that's certainly possible.
This is fine. I think that approving ballot title with the summary language is a great benefit at this time. We don't have to do the formal approval of the ballot measure yet, and I know that that comes with other strings attached, in terms of the staff being able to engage and support the generation of information for the local option levy. So, discussion. More questions for Vance?
Zan, I just want to clarify or underscore the difference between what you're being asked to, to approve today and what will come before you on March 2nd. The ballot title is, it's got your, your caption, your question, and your summary, and it is that ballot title that is published in the newspaper that any registered voter in Benton County will have the opportunity to challenge, and that is a seven day time period. Once that challenge period has expired, if there has been no challenges, then the ballot title is ready to go. It then falls to the board in two weeks to consider the actual ballot measure. So the ballot measure is what the voters will be asked to approve. The ballot title is really sort of like your, a trailer at a movie show, advancing what's coming up in the future. The main event, of course, is the ballot title, excuse me, the ballot measure. Holy cow. So this is something that clerk likes to see ahead of time, because it gives the county an opportunity to get that challenge period rolling without having to put on hold any publication questions regarding the explanatory statement or the ballot title or ballot measure. Dang, that's twice. Two for Tuesday.
Well, it's, it is confusing, and so I appreciate that additional clarification. And I saw that Nancy had her hand up, and then Pat as well.
Thank you. My question is, when do we get a ballot measure number?
Ballot measure number is assigned when the ballot measure is filed with the county clerk. So in the past, what I've done is I've walked it across the street, slid it across the counter, they've date stamped it, and written ballot time. And by the way, it is a point that the election law laws go on.
And that's the ballot number that will be assigned that day. We already will have the title at that time, right?
Yeah.
So the, but, the other point is that once we get the request for approval of the ballot title, the clerk is likely to know whether or not there are any other measures that have been submitted for this main election, and we will probably be able to get at least a provisional estimate of a number, correct? Correct. Nodding heads.
Yes. Yes. He can give us exactly an estimate, but he will, he will flat refuse to be certain until we, we slide the measure up the counter.
Okay. Yeah. I'm looking forward to the, getting that number, because I, I need it for my portion of my responsibilities in the future, so, thank you.
Vance, in the meeting motion in the packet, it doesn't, doesn't talk about the safe harbor language. Is, I assume you, because our meeting motion, and that's, that's all we need at this point?
Correct. We're not dealing with the measure, only the title right now. So the title doesn't really follow the safe harbor questions.
Commissioners, I would also suggest that you read the motion exactly as it's been presented by staff if you plan on making a motion.
Any further questions? Discussion? I'm ready for a motion.
Oh, I, I'm a little nervous here after Joe said that. Here goes. I move to approve submission of the SCL 805 request for the ballot title for renewal of Benton County's Public Health and Safety Local Option Levy.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, and we will look forward to having the title posted, and wait out the challenge period, and return on March 2nd to take up the issue of the ballot measure. Submit it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our new business, and we're moving on to old business, item 8.1, in the matter of adopting ordinance number 2021-0299 regarding setting fees for building permits, inspections, and services. And we will, I believe, be joined by Ron Dietrich for that.
I, I don't know if Ron is going to be here. Remember, we held the public hearing and the first reading of this particular ordinance, so today's second reading is merely a formality.
And we, so in terms of that second reading, since we didn't, this is an opportunity for any further questions or comments?
Not for the public.
No, just for the board.
And Commissioners, if you do have any questions, I can certainly round up Greg Varette and/or Ron, as Vance mentioned.
If there are no questions or comments or discussion, we've talked about this a fair bit already, I would be, I'd happily entertain a meeting and a motion.
It's contagious, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Feels like a Monday.
I move to adopt ordinance 2021-0299, setting fees for building permits, inspections, and services, effective April 1, 2021.
Okay. And it's not an April fool's joke. All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay, thank you. That is one more piece of business that we've been dealing with for a while out of the way.
But we do need a second reading of that ordinance.
Okay.
Would you like me to do that?
I would. I asked you to read it the first time, and you said we didn't need to read it that time, so I'm confused about when we need to read what.
This is an ordinance, so an ordinance always requires a first and second reading. It may have been the order from last week that was something else. But the second reading is, for the Board of County Commissioners for the State of Oregon for the County of Benton, in the matter of setting fees for permits, inspections, and services provided by the Benton County Community Development Department, Building Division, ordinance number 2021-0299. Whoop, hang on a second. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Benton County ordains as follows, short title, Building Division fees. And this ordinance becomes effective at, normally it's 30 days, but in this case, Community Development has asked for a specific date beyond the 30 days, which is April 1.
Thank you. And now we are moving on to the other items under our agenda, the items that we added on, and the primary one was a discussion of roles and function with respect to the Association of Oregon Counties and the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments. And I know that both Commissioner Malone and Commissioner Weiss had questions, and particular topics they wanted to address, so I will begin, I'll open the floor.
Commissioners, if I can just let you know that the committee assignments have been inserted into your calendar invite, in case you need to reference that. I think that's version five, so if you do need to look at it, it's in your calendar invite.
Yes, so I, it looks, John Avi and I had had some conversations, and it sounds like Pat and John Avi had conversations, and so it sounded like it would just be easier if we all talked about it together and worked out the kinks. So I understand, Pat, there was a couple that you wanted to send my way, is that correct?
That is correct, and the, the, here's the COG, and there are, I think, three listings on my internal committee assignment sheet, which is dated February 4th, 2021, and I think emailed from John Avi. So, there's the COG full board, and then Budget and Finance Committee, and the appointment to argue executive.
Pat, my understanding was that you were serving as treasurer on the executive committee? Was this, or has that changed?
That was, yes. At our first meeting of the year, the executive committee has, I think, three chair, vice chair, and Gregor Bullock. That, my understanding, that was mostly a formality, but those are the three positions in the executive, I think five, five-person executive committee.
So you would still serve as treasurer, but you would not be attending those meetings?
No, I, I think, I would, I didn't mean to transfer all those, because it's, one of the listings is the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay, so, I wanted to make sure.
There, there, there'd be a reappointment as part of Benton County's representative to the COG.
Okay. And have you spoken to Ryan Boat about that, as well as to Nancy, or was this the first step?
I think I mentioned this to Nancy. I don't, I don't think I went over this with, with Ryan, but I would do that, assuming we all agree to this, do that as, as part of this package of evening, evening up assignments.
Okay. So Nancy, I'm assuming that you are willing and able to take over as our primary representative with the Council of Governments?
I think so. I was just trying to make notes about the days and times, and I was going to check my calendar real quick.
Commissioners, I'm also very hopeful for staff, as you're making the determination about what's transferring, is to refer directly to the spreadsheet that you have, either by line number or by specific title, because there are six or seven different assignments. Some of those, I believe, Commissioner Malone may be keeping others. It sounds like he's giving up. So if we could just be very specific when you make your determination, that would be helpful for staff.
That was the plan, Joe, this, to finalize the listing and making sure it's correct. And I found one, the, that's the West, hack, full board is not listed on my, needs to be added, so this is a work in progress, but I think we're heading, we're getting close.
I think that in the new version, it's on there, Pat, line 17.
Okay. I'm, I'm going from a, I thought there weren't any.
So looking at the, the COG full board and the Budget and Finance meetings, it looks like those conflict with my county college, which, you know, isn't going to be forever, but it will be for the next six or seven months still, or more. So not sure what to do about that.
Is county college both Thursday and Friday?
It's all, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of the third week of the month.
Okay. I, I thought I checked over your list, but, oh, is it on there? Okay, I, I didn't see it on, on the, on the internal committee list that, that I have, so.
Perhaps we could agree that once county college is over, that we would make this transition.
Okay. That would make sense. I checked this morning, and then see the county college listing.
Yeah, and I noticed they, I don't have any appointments in my calendar after this month, so, and I think that's because they just haven't sent them yet. But, yeah, they, I have a master list that has all the time, and if I put them all in manually, then they send me the, you know, formal ones, and then it puts it in my calendar twice, and then it's confusing.
Yep.
But, yeah, I'm okay taking it over once county college is over.
Okay. That, that sounds, sounds like a plan.
Excellent. And I know that our other topic of conversation was, wait, I will step back for a minute. Are there any other committees? Are there any other committee assignments that we need to talk about before we talk about the larger issue of Association of Oregon Counties?
Commissioners, if we could just specify by line number, which ones are transferring from Commissioner Malone to Commissioner Wise, once County College is over, that would be helpful.
Okay.
I think we're working from two different spreadsheet versions, that's a little bit challenging, but maybe Nancy can do that.
Sorry, I have to unmute on one screen and then go back to the other one. Okay, let's see.
And I'm happy to, like me too.
Okay, ones to be rescheduled would be line 21, OCW-COG Executive Committee, and then line 22, OCW-COG Full Board, and then Finance Line, line 19, OCW-COG Budget Finance Committee. Hopefully I have that correct.
Great, thank you. That's what I had, I just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other committee assignment questions at this time?
Yes, so I guess I'm just trying to figure out the County College Committees and what, how does it work, what are my options? I was having a hard time finding a list of just all the different items, but then, so they recently, as you mentioned, Suzanne, changed up their schedule, and so I did get that email and I was able to look at all of them. So I guess my question is, you know, is it helpful if we're all on different committees? Like, are there a couple committees right now that people are, no one is on, Pat and Suzanne, you guys are not on them, but you'd prefer someone, you know, it would be great to have you on that one? Okay, so I'm, I will be happy to take over those, I was just having a hard time figuring out which one those were.
The Governance and Finance Committee is the, Steering Committee is one that we have not been attending, and it's, frankly, it's, it's interesting, it mostly has to do with internal business of counties and with any financing or revenue-related bills that pop up in the legislature. It would be fantastic if you would be interested in covering that one.
Okay, and how do I get myself on that? Do I email somebody?
You can email either McKenzie, Farrell, or Gina, or you can go online, and I believe that there's an online signup option to receive notices for any of these committees. The staff person for that one is the newest Legislative Committee member, and I'm blanking on his name at the moment, but I could definitely forward you the most recent agenda as well.
Okay, so the government, the Governance and Finance Steering Committee, and then is there any other ones that you would, that you guys have a preference that I'm on?
Well, I think you also were stepping into some of the natural resources areas issues, and it would be fantastic if you would attend the Natural Resources Committee.
Is that one that they changed the name on, something about forest, or am I thinking of something else?
Oh, I think that.
It, it's the same, it has natural resources in the item.
Yeah.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at line, looks like line eight, under Commissioner Malone's assignments, is AOC Public Lands and Natural Resources Committee, is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, but, and Public Lands has met as a separate subcommittee some of the time, and I think right now it's, they're just meeting as one, so, yeah.
So Pat, do you, are you, are you going to continue to go to that? Is it good if we both go, or are you hoping that I just take it over? It doesn't matter to me either way.
I, I saw the new, I'll believe the power outage, and we didn't have power for a couple days over the weekend, and I'm below the line on the arrangement where they have, instead of stacking everything on the third Monday, separating things out, and I have not figured out how that changed my, my attendance.
Natural Resources Steering Committee is meeting on Friday, March 5th, from 8 to 10, so it's shifting to Fridays, first thing in the morning.
There's nothing wrong with both of us there, I think the concept of spreading ourselves around and trying to hit most of the Steering Committees, I think, makes sense, but, like I say, I haven't, I, I think I will probably continue on the Natural Resource Committee, and I think we may get into a discussion a little later of how some of those committees are functioning and how that ties in with the Legislative Committee. I don't know if this is appropriate at, at this time, but I know at our last AOC meeting...
Can I, can I just jump in briefly, Pat? Let's finish this conversation and then we'll shift over to that one. We were intending to talk about the larger issue, but I just wanted to make sure we've finished this off. Generally speaking, Nancy, there's no problem having multiple commissioners at, at one of these Steering Committee meetings. I think if all three of us were there, it would probably not be a good idea, but having two in the room is, is great, especially since we are on these natural resource issues, usually a minority, and it's nice to have a couple of voices in the room that are voicing different opinions, so that's useful. Yeah, the revised schedule is kind of interesting, it spreads it out all over the place and it makes it easier to attend and harder at the same time. I rather like all these on one day. Are there other questions specifically about how those Steering Committees for the Association of Oregon Counties work?
Commissioner, before you move on, let me just make sure I have it straight. So Commissioner Wise is going to take over the AOC Governance and Finance Steering Committee, and then Commissioner Wise and Commissioner Malone will both attend the Public Lands and Natural Resources Committee. Is, is that accurate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I, so the larger issue of AOC is one I'd like to turn to, and we also just received a request for a sign-on to a letter from AOC that I'd like to speak about as well because it is time-sensitive, it needs to be approved by 3 o'clock today. So Joe sent you, forwarded you a message from Andy Smith from Association of Oregon Counties, and this is with respect to rental assistance and housing stabilization funds that came from the federal government to the state and the counties, voicing their interest in making sure that the funds get out to all corners of the state to address housing stabilization needs in light of, once again, the eviction periods elancing, coming up in July. So I'll let you have a chance to read that, if you haven't had a chance to look at it already. To me, it looks like it's overly, pretty much just a broad description of the situation based on analysis from Portland State University and other data, and then a request that the state get that money out as broadly as possible across the state to address the need. This is entering into a bit of a swirl, because I have to say that at the Oregon Housing Community Services, the group that apportioned these funds is trying to change the way they're apportioned and to put them all out by competitive grant, and I think that this is basically saying, let's get some of them out to all counties by allocation and not do it all by grant, so that we can make sure that we don't have overload of funds in an area where we have really good proposal writers and not enough, and not fast enough in other corners of the state. So that's just a little other background, so it's a complicated arena right now. But while you're looking at that, I will do my best at stating what Commissioner Malone was concerned about, and that is that at the Oregon Association of Counties right now, on some issues, we find ourselves, in contrast to the legislature, where there are so many legislators from the Portland metro area, we're in a distinct minority in being more progressive on some issues. And so, given that the majority of commissioners are from the remainder of the state, and they are a rather conservative body, and on some human services issues and health issues and on natural resource issues in particular, that means that we, even if we approve of some of these legislative proposals in our Steering Committee meetings, they're getting overturned in the legislative body, which is a larger and more representative body of commissioners overall. And what we're also seeing, or I am, after having been in office and a member of Association of Oregon Counties for the last four years, is a much greater partisan voting pattern. Whereas, in the first couple of years I was a commissioner, there was a more thoughtful policy-based discussion about some of these matters. Now it is much more likely to be party-aligned, which also, again, puts us in a distinct minority. So it's difficult to, and this is all against the backdrop of the Association of Oregon Counties having a very serious discussion of dues and membership and needing to update both the membership due structure and to increase the dues based on a cost of living year over year, because the dues have not been increased for several years and they're not keeping up with the costs of providing lobbying services in Salem. So it is a challenging position to be in to, because we don't have any kind of lobbying expertise or staff position in-house as Blaine County, Quackamas County, Washington County, Multnomah County do, and so we rely on Association of Oregon Counties to provide us these services and the intelligence, frankly, about what's going on on, in a regular basis in Salem that affects counties, but we don't, may not always be as well-represented in terms of our values and interests as we might be. There have been discussions going on between Executive Director Gina and commissioners about this topic, and been trying to figure out how best to address the divergence of values and viewpoints and still put together a united front for counties wherever possible. And I think that there are a couple of different strategies that may emerge from those discussions. One is that it may be that the lobbying, our legislative staff, Steering Committee coordinators, will not bring to the body some of the more controversial measures, but stick to the ones that really are core county function and process and of funding significance, and just let each county go on their own when it comes to some of the top-line issues that are likely to be controversial in the Legislative Committee. I think that that's going to take more discussion, we'll see where it goes, but I, I rather like that idea, that leaves us free to put forth our own opinions on those matters. The other is that the AOC can also continue to perform a really valuable service to all of us if we spend a little bit more time proactively rather than reactively, sharing our experience in different counties about strategies that work for dealing with some of our top-line challenges, whether it's housing and homelessness, or public safety matters, or behavioral health issues. So would like to see a little bit more staff emphasis on supporting that exchange of ideas on hot-topic issues in some of those Steering Committee meetings, rather than just being in reactive mode with respect to legislation. So, that said, Pat, open it up to comments, impressions, and I know Nancy, you've only been to, I think, one meeting, set of meetings so far, so it's all new, but I'm sure you're getting a window into it through County College as well.
Zan, you, I think you gave a good summary of the current situation, and, you know, I've attended meetings for basically two years, and it seems like partisan, well, we have a lot of, we have a lot of votes, kind of partisan muscle is more evident now than at the start, and may have, when was it, the climate change bill that was kind of a top priority of the governors in the 2019 session where Republicans knew they couldn't get what they wanted out of the legislation, so they walked out, so nothing could happen. And I, I think that, that has probably spurred on some of partisan, oh, we've got muscle, let's use it. And last time, well, it was in the consent calendar, the consent mill, 587, where in the Steering Committee, I assume fairly strongly supported, and then back to the Legislative Committee, and nah, we're, we're not, that's government, we don't, we don't like that. And I thought the idea of the Steering Committee was those that were interested would go over in at least modest detail and then recommend to the Legislative Committee, and to just get that railroaded was disturbing, and got me thinking of the strategy that you were talking about, is AOC has a role, I mean, they do a good job of gathering information, staying on top of what's going on, we just don't have the capacity as a medium-sized county, and, but on issues that we think are important to, to our county, my thought is why bother trying to wrestle with AOC and, and maybe not get very far, whereas pick up the phone slash email and let our, especially local legislators know what we think, and that diminishes AOC, and I think at this point, that's appropriate. I mean, there's always a tension there, but to me, there was a little more respect for divergent opinions and maybe giving minority counties benefit of the doubt on some issues, and I see that, just in the two years that I've been attending, see that is being reduced. So I, I think we need to stay involved with AOC and voice our concerns, and I think... And I think the strategy of, well, let's figure out which issues, which bills we have a chance of agreeing on and work on those and like steering away from the controversial ones, which is too bad, but we have to deal with reality. And I guess we've only had one meeting this year, but I was disturbed with some of the discussions and I think we need to modify our approach.
Thank you. Yeah, it happened in the January meeting as well, where, again, with Health and Human Services, where two of the bills that the steering committee recommended AOC support got voted down. And I think that some of the dynamic is also made worse by the virtual format that we're working in. It's a lot harder to, or a lot easier to say no to people when you're not sitting next to them and having lunch with them. And the fact that legislative committee was over lunch, it was a very collegial time, I think was helpful. So there are some things about the virtual dynamic that are making it more uncomfortable. Some states, there is a rural organization and an urban organization in terms of county associations. I would really hate to see us fracture that much. And I think it is possible to stay united if we focus on the issues that matter to everyone and that are pretty easy for us to agree on, whether it's economic development funds or community corrections dollars or behavioral health issues. For the most part, those are unifying issues and a lot of the others as well. So I think we should just keep discussing this. It's going to be something that comes up again. And Pat, if you end up going to the membership committee meetings as an alternate to Pat Farr from Lane County, you'll find that this discussion is pretty actively going on in that forum as well. And Nancy, I don't know whether it's, you don't have as much casual time for County College at this point, for those corridor conversations, but I suspect your new, your fellow new commissioners probably also have some interesting perspectives that way. I also see that there is not as much engagement of new commissioners at this time, and I think that's probably partly because of the virtual format as well. So other comments at this time?
I just have a question. If you can refresh my memory, are the dues for AOC based on population or does it fly across every entity?
It's a very complicated formula, and it is in the bylaws. And I think that there's a question about, A, removing the formula from the bylaws and B, making it a little bit more equitable. There have been a couple of different models proposed. Neither, one of them is straight population-based, but that really makes it expensive for Multnomah County, for instance. So, and Multnomah County is probably represented the most poorly by the values of Association of Oregon Counties. So there's a tension there. And so whatever, the membership committee will be looking at dues structure alternatives. And I'm the co-chair right now with the Budget and Finance Committee, and we are also looking at that in the context of that committee. So I'll let you know what, how things are evolving. But I think the attempt is to try and keep as many counties in the tent as possible. So this question of what services and functions to provide on the one hand and how to structure it financially on the other have to come together in the next few months.
Okay.
It's been a long-term discussion. It started, it was ongoing when I first started as a commissioner four years ago, and I'm hopeful that we can wrap it up this year.
The thought, when you talk about the dues, well, if every county gets the same vote, then shouldn't the dues follow that structure? Just a thought.
Yeah, then you have a county that has 2,000 people paying the same amount as the county that has, you know, more than a million, that's, you know, it doesn't work either. They just don't have deep stuffed pockets, not enough acres to tax or people. So it's a tricky balancing act. I hear what you're saying, but I think there's more energy focused on this now than there has been since I took office, and I think that there are ways to thread it, this needle. It's going to take work, though.
Yep, I was a little bit facetious with that, but if that's the voting structure, then why isn't that the dues structure? So, and I realize you have to compromise. It seemed like the first year, I hardly saw a thing, Multnomah County Commissioners, just, and I, it depends who's on their board and, but it seemed like, oh, our most populous county isn't here. And in some sense, I can see why, if you, if your voice isn't heard, then why bother going to meetings to be frustrated and not advance issues that you think are important? No, I can see there being interesting discussions. It takes fair amount of dues to keep things running and, but we should have continuing discussion about everybody's voice being heard and being more mindful of minority counties, majority population minority counties. So, and I'm sure as long as this organization has been going, that discussion has been part of the picture.
I think so. There's more Multnomah participation now than there has been since I started. It's an interesting thing. I think that, you raise another good point, though, that it's also the role of whoever's facilitating the meeting and the president, in this case of AOC, to facilitate those meetings in such a way that she ensures that minority voices are heard. So I think a conversation with Commissioner Crivens is probably a good idea as well, just to see if we can shift the dynamics a little bit so people feel a little more included. And I know that this is, you know, it goes back and forth in the legislature. Our rural counties feel like they're not, our rural representatives feel like they aren't heard as much, so it goes both ways. So, okay. I would like to take a look at that letter that was sent to us by Andy Smith and see if we feel comfortable signing on, given that it's such short notice, if you've had a chance to look at it.
Commissioners, as you're looking at that letter, just to let you know that maybe this will make you feel a little bit better, that the dialogue you've just been having the last few minutes is a dialogue that occurs frequently, not only within the state of Oregon, but also within other states. And I can't tell you how many times I have been to similar conversation with governing bodies. And I have an example, when I was in Colorado, unfortunately, their Association of Counties did fracture and a new entity was formed by, gosh, I can't remember how many counties, there are 64 counties in Colorado, and they ended up fracturing their organization. And, but that discussion came and went for probably about 20 years, and then it finally did occur. I don't know if there's, what the results are of that, but just know that this discussion does occur elsewhere from time to time, and it always seems like it occurs after an election.
Yes. What feathers are most wracked?
Joe, I appreciate that perspective, and it's not surprising at all, the discussions of counties succeeding and joining eastern Oregon counties, well, we want to be part of Idaho or southern Oregon, we want to be part of northern California, State of Jefferson, I believe, and with the discussions been going on, it was going strong just before World War II hit. So it's, as you point out, these are not new issues, but I think just figuring out what our role is and how to be effective is the goal. And does this organization advance our goals? Is what we're, are we getting enough out of it for what we're putting into it in time and money?
Ongoing conversation. So have you had an opportunity to look at this letter? The bottom line is that it really wants to empower local community action agencies and local culturally appropriate partners to engage tenants and restore, in the benefits that are available from federal legislation for rental assistance and utility benefits and to ensure that vulnerable populations are addressed first and foremost.
I have not, I mean, I glanced at it last night. It seems like a worthwhile effort, but I can't tell if there's landmines in.
I don't think so. Again, I've been dealing with this issue for a while. As I mentioned, the Oregon Housing and Community Services, that AOC is trying to walk a fine line here, put it that way. And I think part of the reason it's hard to read this letter is because of the fact that they're walking a fine line. That we've received a large amount of federal money for housing assistance, rental assistance, et cetera, and the Housing and Community Services at State is wanting to put more and more of that money out competitively by proposal rather than through our community action agencies, which in our case is the Community Services Consortium. And the challenge is that the organizations that can afford to take federal money, which is all reimbursement-based in terms of the granting, those large nonprofit organizations are mostly based in Salem, Eugene, and Portland, but there's need all across the state. And so those community action agencies are essential in order to get those dollars out across the state as widely as possible to those vulnerable populations. And the way I read this is that it's the Association of Oregon Counties weighing in and saying, there's a huge need for rental assistance and associated support, and please take a balanced approach to getting the money out through culturally specific and responsive organizations representing people of color and other disadvantaged populations and through the community action agencies. So it says that in a lot more words, and it dances around things more, but that's the way I read this letter. And the need is urgent. You know, if we go through, again, requests for proposal processes that take, Oregon Housing and Community Services typically, you know, eight to 10 weeks, that's not helpful. Pat, you're muted.
I see that CSC has signed on to this.
Yeah, I would be happy to sign on.
So I'm fine signing on, but I'm just trying to understand, so this is a letter from the Association of Oregon Counties and League of Oregon Cities to the Oregon Housing and Community Services, and they're basically saying, please make sure that this is distributed to every corner of Oregon. It's about equitable distribution, is that? I didn't, I just saw the email, so I was just trying to scroll through it during our meeting, and I didn't see any mention about BIPOC or other.
It's all, if you look at the last page, there are four points that are mentioned. It says, the Association of Oregon Counties and League of Oregon Cities work in partnership with a variety of blah, blah, blah. And then it says that, it talks about addressing these issues.
There we go.
And it's, frankly, this letter is, again, as I see it, dancing around a core issue. And that issue is that the Housing and Community Services, the Housing and Civilizations Council wants to put a large proportion of these monies out by competitive process, and they already have a lot of that, and they are changing the role of the community action agencies. So this is a letter that's basically saying, we support the goals of Housing and Community Services to address people of color and the long-term inequitable distribution of resources, but don't at the same time then force change the rest of the state where there's also an awful lot of need and a lot of vulnerability by going too far in the other direction. So I think the letter is a little confusing that way because they're trying to be delicate in what they say. But I've been working off with Community Services Consortium for at least a couple of months, so.
Okay, okay, yeah, well, I definitely will support it. I think this is a good example of, in my opinion, why more plain language is easier sometimes, but, but again, maybe like you said, they're dancing around a political issue, I don't know, but I'm happy to support it.
Yeah.
Commissioners, if you are going to support it, would you please make a motion?
I was just going to ask, so what do we call this letter?
I would call it a letter to Oregon Housing and Community Services regarding emergency rental assistance.
I'll make a motion for Bend County to support the Oregon Housing and Community Services rental assistance program.
By, like, by signing on or just?
Yeah, I think I would say, would look for a motion saying, for support of the joint AOC-LOC letter on behalf of emergency rental assistance directed to Oregon Housing and Community Services.
Can that be a friendly amendment?
I think Pat said yes.
Very friendly.
Okay, second.
Okay, all in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Any other business for the good of the order? Okay, with that, we are adjourned.
Much time.
Thank you very much. Yes, indeed.